I would like to call the adjourned meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:07 PM. Bledge of allegiance, Commissioner Mora, please.
Please stand. Raise your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call, Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioner Flores, absent, Commissioner Jimenez.
Present.
Commissioner Mora. Vice Chair Yella, absent, Chair Carvajal, here. Have a quorum.
Number four, ex parte communications, this section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications, Commissioner Jimenez?
None.
Commissioner Mora?
None.
And myself, none. Item five, public hearing. Sequa analyzed in the adoption program EIR of the 2040 general plan, targeted zoning ordinance update TZOU project, I'd like to call upon Assistant Director of Planning Kwang Nguyen to introduce City Consultant Jose Rodriguez of MIG to present item number five.
Good evening Commissioners, before I introduce our MIG consultant, I just wanted to provide you with a quick background of tonight's item. This public hearing item was continued from the July 10th Planning Commission meeting. Just wanted to note that there is a typo on the staff report which stated that it was continued from the June 22nd meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
You may recall that due to an error that had occurred when notifying property owners of the proposed actions and specifically naming, the name field shifted for 271 properties resulting in those properties receiving the notice, but it was addressed to the wrong person. So the item was opened and continued to tonight's meeting. As documented in the report, in addition to the seven comments that I had summarized during last meeting, we also received two in-person as well as Zoom comments during the meeting. Also, in addition, six additional comments were received since that date. We have forwarded those comments to you via email. And I also, I believe the Planning Commission Secretary also provided you with hard copies here tonight. Nevertheless, a summary of the comments as well as appropriate responses will be provided to you in the presentation tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our MIG consultant, Jose Rodriguez, who will be providing you with tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening Chairperson Carvajal and members of the Planning Commission. As Kwang mentioned, I'm Jose Rodriguez, Senior Project Manager with MIG, and I'll be presenting this item. And I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint, there it is. All right, for this agenda item, as Kwang mentioned, being continued from the last meeting, but we've had numerous study sessions and previous meetings regarding this topic area. So for part of this presentation, I'll be giving an overview of all the amendments that we're making for the zoning code, including the mixed-use zone districts, changes to the multifamily residential zone districts, revised zoning map, the parking standards. And I'm going to briefly talk about the non-conforming provisions because I think they're important considering the public comments that we received. The non-conforming provisions are not included in this package, but the city staff, we have a draft revised non-conforming provisions that we're still refining, but talking with staff that we're going to go ahead and get that to the Planning Commission very, very soon. I'll briefly also talk about the environmental review and the process that we took, being consistent with the general plan update that we recently did a little over a year ago. And then, as Kwang mentioned, I'll briefly talk about all the public hearing comments from the last continued public hearing to some of the new comments that received up to this meeting. And then there's the staff's recommendation. All right, so the targeted zoning amendments, as you recall, and I'll provide the overview, I know you're very familiar with this through the recent study sessions we had, but for those new members both on Zoom and in the public, I want to go through the new zoning changes that we're making. One is we're creating new mixed-use zones throughout certain parts of the city, we have a mixed-use zone, we're calling it mixed-use. We also have a downtown zone around the downtown area, not far from where we're at, and then a transit-oriented development zone, and those are primarily around Washington, the new being where the new planned or proposed light rail station along Washington is being planned, and then another mixed-use zone near the MetroLink station. We did make adjustments to the multifamily residential zones, both revising the medium-density designation for the R3 zone, and we created a new high-density residential zone, an R4 zone. And all of these changes again are primarily responsive to the housing element and the general plan that we adopted back in February of 2022, or 23, last year. And so they're in response to the state's need for more housing in Santa Fe Springs. In addition to the mixed-use and the multifamily changes, we're also, there are new objective design development standards incorporated into the new zoning, both mixed-use and residential zoning districts. And then we updated definitions as we created new mixed-use categories, we have new use tables, and we want to make sure that there is a defined definition for every use that are in all of the use tables. So that's important when someone's looking to add a new use within those zones, that it's clearly defined what that use is. In addition, some other changes we've made, we've updated the established zone districts, that's just in the beginning of the zoning section, it identifies that we're having new mixed-use sections. We updated the zoning map. And based off the new mixed-use districts and the revised multifamily districts, we also updated the parking standards. And the reason why we updated the parking standards, a couple of things, one, we created new zones, so we needed to address the parking for those. But the other reason is the state, not only just Santa Fe Springs, but all municipalities in California are looking to how do we reduce some of the cost for new multifamily. And one way the state was looking at is looking at the parking standard, so we've made some adjustments to parking standards, recognizing parking's still important in certain areas, we know there's some impacted areas, and so how do we balance what the state's looking for and both on current community contexts, specifically in Santa Fe Springs. Lastly, we are updating the non-conforming situations section, it's not included as part of this amendment, but I think again, it's really, really important, and I have a slide to really discuss some of the key components of non-conforming. But really, the impetus to provide non-conforming and updating the non-conforming was part of the general plan process, and you may have been a part of some of those study sessions where many industrial business owners, just business owners in general in Santa Fe Springs, were concerned about some of the zoning changes. And so through many, many meetings with the City Council and the Planning Commission, we decided to relook at the non-conforming situations and make sure we comprehensively updated, but address some of the concerns that the businesses had. So the non-conforming we recognize is important, and those will be coming very, very soon. All right, so why are we making all of these changes? Well, a couple of reasons, one, as I mentioned, the general plan update that we did last year, we looked at the entire city holistically and targeted specific areas for changes in response to a couple of things, one, you know, the general plan hadn't been updated in a while. Two was the housing element, all the housing elements were due a couple of years ago. The state looked at Santa Fe Springs and not requiring them to build 952 housing units, but the state's requiring that the city updates its land use and zoning so that it can accommodate 952 housing units. So it'll be up to the property owners if they want to sell their property, particularly the ones that we've identified for housing. If they want to, you know, change those properties and sell to a housing developer and build a housing. But it's up to the property owners, the city will not be pushing any property owners to build any housing in the city. The other thing is, based on state law, the 952, the city has to provide or accommodate space in the city for those 952 by state law. That's how we got, we're still in the process of trying to get the housing element certified, I think we're getting really, really close, we got some comments from HCD. And then lastly, parts of the zoning code haven't been updated in quite a while, so we're modernizing some of the texts, updating the texts. Again, this is not, we're not making a comprehensive update to the zoning code, it's very targeted, mixed-use, multifamily, parking definitions. And I think the city down the road, not anytime soon, I believe, but we'll look at some other changes in the future. In terms of public engagement, we've had numerous meetings starting from June 2022, but this are just the zoning meetings, if you recall, for the general plan, we've had several years of of public meetings as well for the general plan update, and those are going back to 20, I believe, 2020. But we've had ZAG meetings, which are the zoning advisory group meetings, that include many business owners, industrial businesses, as well as community members, community workshops. We've reached out to all of the property owners that will be affected by the zone changes. We've had Planning Commission zoning study sessions multiple times. We met with the business group, those are the members that are primarily concerned with the non-conforming, but also provided input on the mixed-use designations as well. And then, as you recall, we had a study session with this particular body last month to go over these changes. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly, but feel free to interrupt if you have any questions. These are the mixed-use zones that were, that is part of the amendment. As you can see, the mixed-use zone covers parts of a little bit of Washington and along Telegraph. The downtown area covers the heritage, the heritage business, and I apologize and mess up the name, but the heritage business center in the center of the town, and then TOD again up on Washington and on Imperial Highway near the MetroLink station. Here are just a quick few pages of the draft text with some graphics, the use tables and development standards. All right, so just really quick, the overview of the mixed-use zones, again, really to modernize use tables compliant with state law, creating the new definitions. We talked about this with a study session with the City Council, still allowing, I shouldn't say allowing driveways, but considering driveways through a conditional use permit. The mixed-use zone now contains objective development standards, which make it a little bit easier to understand in a black and white process what the standards are required. New step-back standards, particularly adjacent to an R1 zone, parking and loading standards were adjusted for both, allowing both shared and off-site parking standards. So if you have two properties adjoining each other for mixed-use, they can share parking, or you can have off-site parking standards, meaning if a building is built on one site and you have another site, the parking could be provided off-site with a certain distance. And then we updated bicycle and electrical vehicle parking standards, recognizing that those are still important. There's some state requirements for bicycle and electric vehicles, but we'll make sure we met those and gone a little bit beyond what the state's requiring. And then there are architectural, design and streetscape standards. For the multifamily residential zone, the R3 and R4 zone, you can see primarily the city is consistent of an R4, an R3 zone, which is the light orange. There's only a few areas where the R4 zone would apply and it's existing developed apartments already. Again, similar to the mixed-use, here are some, the tables and graphics. And then just real quick, again, the key things, key changes we're making was consistency with the general plan, updating the tables, development standards. We did improve the outdoor open space requirements, same thing with bicycle and electrical vehicle parking standards. Couple other changes we made in the parking standards were allowing confirming and having clear guest parking standards, which there weren't before. Allowing some tandem parking requirements, and then codifying the covered parking requirement, actually reducing some of the covered parking requirement, and I believe at a 50% requirement. The revised zoning map reflects the mixed-use and multifamily's changes that we made, and it's also consistent with the general plan land use map, that's the key thing, the maps have to be consistent. The zones don't have to match exactly, but there has to be a consistency between the general plan map. I'm just going to walk through this map really quick, and that map is available on the city's website. I will go back, actually, there is something, a couple of things important. There are a few areas, I know we're talking a lot about the mixed-use and the multifamily, but as part of the general plan update, we did adjust some of the heavy manufacturing zones, and we did adjust those to a lighter manufacturing zones, and those are reflected on the map itself. And again, a lot of the changes to the light manufacturing zones were reflecting on proximity to residential zones. And again, this is consistent with the general plan map. All right, this is to test your eyesight, but this is the parking standards, I'm not going to go that, go over that detail, but the key things that are addressed in the parking standards was, if you're within a half, one-half mile of a major transit stop, you don't have to provide minimum parking. So that means currently the city and the proposed parking changes requires two parking spaces per unit. Now, if you were near a transit station, the developer would not have to go, wouldn't have to meet the two, the minimum of two per unit, you can actually, he or she can actually do less. And that's, again, consistent with the new state law requirement. For flexibility for parking, requiring or allowing for tandem, and it would only be a maximum of 30% of the total parking spaces for multifamily units, so again, provide some flexibility to allow for some more spaces through tandem. We established the guest parking, which is consistent with a lot of communities in Southern California, is one guest space for every four units. And then, as I mentioned, the covered parking requirement, we've made some reductions to that, I believe previously, the zoning text required all parking to be covered, whether it's enclosed or in a covered carport, we're now looking at 50% reduction of covered parking space. And again, consistent with what the state is asking us to relook at parking, how can we reduce some of the parking costs? And then lastly, based off the housing element and the new multifamily zones, there were some new care services and facility requirements as part of the housing element, whether it's emergency homeless shelters or residential care facilities, we made sure we included the parking standards for those as well. All right, let's go over the non-conforming provisions. As I mentioned, this is not a part of this amendment today, but I will let you know that we're working with city staff currently to get those wrapped up, we do have a draft version. We've probably had numerous back and forth meetings with the industrial and business property owners that are also, we're calling it the Business Working Group, in addition to the zoning advisory group, and many of them are in the zoning advisory group, but making sure that based off the general plan commitments through policy and what the City Council recommended, and this body recommended for policy changes, we want to make sure that the non-conforming goes through. And again, they're really, really important considering the public comments we received as part of this item. So really quick, the summary of the potential, I shouldn't say potential, but the plan changes for the non-conforming sections. Complete overhaul of that provisions, the provisions were last prepared in the 1960s, so it's a complete overhaul. And again, to implement the general plan, and also to make them a little bit more user, understandable and and to be implemented by city staff. The other thing is, it clearly differentiates what a non-conforming lot is, which is the property, it could be the size. Zoning codes require minimum lot sizes and so forth, and so sometimes the lots can get out of, can become non-conforming if the zone, for example, the mixed-use now requires a different lot size, then the lot becomes non-conforming. So it clearly identifies those and identifies the uses, the type of use that's on the property. If that use and the zoning changes, that use could be non-conforming. And then the development standards themselves, setbacks, the parking and so forth, all of those, there's specific regulations, standards for all of those in the non-conforming section. I think one of the key things is currently, the zoning code in the non-conforming section does have an amortization period, or when uses, if they become non-conforming, the city will look to pursue a termination of that use or structure. I believe currently the zoning code, anywhere from one to 20 years, I think one year, if it's like a dilapidated building is non-conforming, the city will look to target that for termination, or, you know, removal. Three years for other buildings, and then 20 years for like gas sites, but it varies, if you look at the code, for certain years, the city can target when to remove those. The proposed non-conforming provisions is looking to remove all of those. So if you're a business and a non-conforming business and your zoning changes, you can actually continue that business essentially in perpetuity. So you can continue that business as long as you're in good standing in terms of meeting all of the municipal code requirements, not including the non-conforming, but other types, you're not violating certain other code violations. But if your zone has changed and you're a non-conforming use, you can continue to operate. The zoning, the changes to the non-conforming also looks to recognize established property investments, particularly if a property owner has made significant investments to their property. They also don't get affected if there's a change in the ownership of property, property were to change ownership, or the tenant were to change ownership, even if it's still a non-conforming status, that status will still be applied, the city is not going to look to push or force businesses out of their properties and so forth. And lastly, the non-conforming development, any building that's a non-conforming status can still be maintained, it can still be repaired, improved and continued. We do have sections, if you want to expand your non-conforming business or use or structure, you would have to go through a conditional use process. So that opportunity to expand or, or improve, expand their business is still an opportunity. All right, wrapping up our presentation here. All of the zoning changes that we've made, all the amendments are consistent with the general plan EIR that was done last year. So as part of the general plan, if you recall, there's a huge general plan EIR document, it looks at growth for about three, three to 4,000 units in the city. I know the housing element only looked at 952, but for a 20, keep in mind, the housing element only looks for an eight-year horizon. The general plan typically looks at a 20-year horizon, so we looked at more units. So in the event, in the future, the state wants more housing in Santa Fe Springs, the general plan has covered 20 years of housing through about 3,000 units in the EIR. The changes we're making as part of the zoning code is all consistent with that general plan, with the land use plan and with the EIR. So we've prepared a consistency findings that, that shows that these amendments are consistent with the general plan EIR. And this EIR again was just certified last year, so it's a very new EIR. And so that's part of the benefit of having, spending that much effort to do the EIR. I'm going to go through some of the comments that we've received, both at the previous continued public hearing, and then some of the comments we received as part of this leading up to this meeting, and I'll try to address some of the comments, I do have some slides that address the overall comments, but I'll try to address some of the particular comments. And then if there's other presenters that come up with new comments, city staff and myself, we can try to address those as much as we can. There was a person, I apologize, we didn't get his name, but representing the Angeles Shoe Polish Company was objecting to the changes, didn't like the conditions based on the prop, being placed on the property, particularly the zone, the zoning changes, and thought that he would not be able to sell to other manufacturers and must be to a residential developer. Would like to consider more flexible options, and then I thought the conditions were not fair. Just want to make it clear that if you have an industrial zone property, but the residential zone amendment occurs as part of this, the decision you make, the property owner could still sell to another industrial property owner or manufacturer. They don't have to necessarily sell it to a residential developer, but they have that flexibility to, but they can maintain, they can still sell it to manufacturing use because it will still have the non-conforming status, and it's still based on the changes that we're making existing. And I know the current or the upcoming non-conforming section will still allow industrial uses to continue. There is Mr. Wendell, Stefan Wendell from Golden Springs Development, was also part of a lot of our meetings previously, and appreciate some of the changes we made to service stations, allowing the transition to alternative fuels, that was his public comment. We had a handful of phone calls and letters. We had one person concerned with potential impacts to the properties, but does support the non-conforming provisions. We have another person concerned with the changes to the M1 and concerned with the limited reduction of allowable uses under the M1 as opposed to the M2 changes. However, she still supports the change. We have another person that wanted to understand the impacts to their properties and has met with city staff to discuss those. We had another person left several messages, and I believe the city has made numerous attempts to to call back. And then another gentleman requested more information, which staff has provided more, has provided that information to him. City of Cerritos has submitted a letter, more on the SEQA process and concern about the air quality environmental impacts. But as I mentioned, those are all covered in the EIR, and there are some mitigations that address the air quality impacts. And there's a Mr. Matt Franklin had some comments related to the non-conforming provisions, but as we mentioned, that those are not part of this process, but we will make sure we reach out to him when the non-conforming provisions come back, and so that he can look at the non-conforming provision, draft text, and participate in the public hearing process for that. These are the public hearing comments leading up to this particular meeting. We had a gentleman inquire on which changing zones that were being applied, which if any industrial zoning standards are being changed, I will point out, we're only changing mixed-use and multifamily, no industrial zoning changes are being proposed at this time or being made as part of this project. He also inquired about the non-conforming provisions with staff providing him information about. We had another person note change from the N4 to a C4 designation, staff correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was on the Washington Boulevard corridor, asked why the property was changing to a commercial zone. And again, this was part of the general plan update, and we made this similar change in the zoning. He had mentioned that, you know, if the zoning changes would occur, none of the existing businesses would be allowed in the in the building, and the new businesses, if they were, if some of them were to leave, they wouldn't be allowed in the C4, C4 zone. And so the zone change, and through his words, would condemn the property. We will note, some of the, the commercial changes we made on Washington that were formerly are now M1, but we're proposing to a C4, are mostly commercial properties that were, that had an existing industrial zone, so we want to make sure that that matched the commercial properties. And we do want to note that those existing businesses through the non-conforming provisions would still allow those businesses to continue. And then when the new non-conforming provisions get approved, those businesses can still continue in perpetuity as we remove those. uh in perpetuity as we remove those uh timeline restrictions, uh, so, so that wouldn't be the case. Uh, so we want to point that out and we, and if there's any questions that come up, we, uh, staff can help address, address those. Uh, we had another uh gentle, a gentleman um uh concerned about changing the industrial site to residential. Uh, it occupied the property for many, many years. His thought was, is the city intent to take the property and force the landlord to evict? Uh, unfortunately, that, the city has no intention of doing that. Um, even though the property will be zone residential, the industrial uses, um, even it's been operating for sixty-plus years can actually operate another sixty-plus years uh with the new nonconforming provisions, when they do get adopted, they'll allow for continued maintenance um and improvements uh to uh to the property. And if they wanted to expand on their property, uh, they'll have to go through a conditional use permit. Uh, but there is no intention for the city to uh force uh the landlord to evict any of those properties, even though it's residential uh zone. Uh, the nonconforming provisions will allow, even, even the nonconforming provisions today, uh, even they're not, the, the new ones are not being adopted yet. Will still allow that existing businesses to continue to operate. Uh, another gentleman um representing uh one of the owners um uh again, also questioned about the change from industrial to residential. Uh, and again, this is, I think, similar to um one of the previous comments, but again, same thing, said he's not looking to evict any of the property owners. Um, and they did mention that they object to the zoning changes, just wanted to bring that comment up. We had another person uh expressed concerning rezoning of the property. Uh, how will it affect the value? Uh, will the city, uh, the city compensate for potential loss of value? Um, unfortunately, the city will not uh compensate, and I guess it depends on what zoning was it, whether it's an M one to M two or residential zone. Um, either way, they're still um uh the, the pro, the property owner could still sell the property uh again, um, whether it's an exist, um, whether it's a residential zone um or not. And then there is the last comment uh was about landscaping uh in a commercial, in a commercial zone for commercial property. Due to uh the new mixed use zone will require uh really uh strict uh landscaping requirements uh on a, on a irregular shaped lot. Uh, staff noted that currently the C four zone um does have some re, uh, really restrictive landscaping requirements. Uh, the mixed use zone would um kind of alleviate some of those restrictions. However, on a regular shaped lot, that's where you can take advantage of the variance process. So usually if you're saw, if your lot, yeah, is not like a typical lot, it's kind of um, it's up against the hill or it's a, has really weird shapes in terms of lot, you can take advantage of the variance and have some restriction, uh, reduce some of the restrictions on the property um through that process. Those are those comments. Um, just real quick for clarification, uh, and again, I'll just summarize some of those comments uh as I dress uh particular comments from the public, but any zone changes that we've made as part of this amendment, um, again, are not going to require any businesses uh be forced to close um or go through an eviction process. Uh, existing businesses may continue to operate even during ownership or tenant changes. Uh, the nonconforming status, um, as I mentioned, currently allows uh or requires a termination of a use or structure within one to twenty years. Um, and as I mentioned, the new nonconforming provisions are going to remove those uh and so that uh nonconforming uh businesses, if they want to continue to operate uh their use and their business. And then lastly, again, the city's intention really not to force property owners to evict tenants uh or to convert sites to housing. The state uh part of the housing element only makes sure that the city can accommodate the number of housing units. As you recall, city doesn't have a lot of vacant land, there's a lot of industrial land, but when the state requires almost a thousand housing units. Uh, part of the analysis for the general plan is we looked at where we can put new housing uh in the city. Look at the mixed use corridors, uh, we looked at various areas and we try to be selective. We tried to avoid certain properties just because um either there's too much pollution or too many um uh trucking uh issues. Uh, and so we were really diligent and strategic on where we made those changes. Unfortunately, some of those changes still affect uh property owners, but again, the uh through state law, the city only has to accommodate, they're not forcing any property owners to build any housing. It's essentially, it comes up to the property owner, the property owner has the right to sell their property and develop it as residential or continue it uh as a nonconforming industrial use. Uh, these are the recommendations, obviously, uh, the city council uh uh will be certifying um and, and adopt um approving uh the ordinance. Uh, but it's up to the planning commission, um, city staff's recommendations for the planning commission to adopt uh the resolution two four to uh twenty twenty-three uh recommending that the city council find the target zoning ordinance update project, including the zoning map within the scope of the twenty twenty-four general plan E I R. As I mentioned, the E I R uh covers uh this particular project. And then city staff is also recommending that this body um um recommend that the city council approve and adopt the two separate ordinance, one that does the targeted zoning map uh amendments, including the mixed use and the multifamily pa- parking and so forth, and another ordinance that um actually affects or uh will implement or effectuate uh the zoning map. And so with that, uh, I, myself and staff will happy to answer uh any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners at this time have questions on this item? Commissioner Mora?
Um, well, I got a comment and then a question. Uh, first one was, you know, thank you for clarifying a lot of that. A lot of the comments that, you know, I was reading uh based on some of the property owners, their concerns were that their property was basically, you know, some, when I started saying, you know, condemned or being able to, or they're going to be evicted. So um, you know, first was there something in the language that maybe made them feel that that was the case, that they were going to be losing their property, not be able to continue? But I guess you just clarified it, this is, they're able to continue. And one of the reasons, and you're correcting if I'm wrong, was, you know, we need to comply with what the state is requiring. We don't have a lot of land for houses, but this is, gives us the ability to build homes if the space provided, and if the property owner decides to do that. Uh, otherwise, businesses as usual will continue with these uh uh business owners, correct?
Correct.
Any other question? Commissioner Jimenez?
Yeah, just real quick, um, to clarify regarding business owners and um industrial use, once it gets changed over, if they want to sell their property, they could still sell it as industrial, someone else could come in and?
Well, the use uh will still be a residential use, there'll be a nonconforming use. But through the provisions of the nonconforming section, an industrial use still can, can continue. So they could sell it to another industrial owner that would want to continue that particular use uh than that uh within that structure, then absolutely that can still continue.
So that wouldn't affect the sale of the, the price wise?
Uh, well, I, I couldn't say if that will affect the price, uh, the price or not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Flack?
Yeah, um. You talked about maintenance and um improvements that would have to conform to conditional use permits, what does that look like if you say, uh, say they want to make upgrades to their existing nonresidential property? And then it comes before the city and the commission and says, well, it's not zoned for that, so we're not going to approve the conditional use. What type of provision is, does um the properties have in place for that?
No, that's a great, good question, and that is covered in the nonconforming section. As I mentioned, we're still, there's still draft language, but we do have specific language that addresses that. So currently with the nonconforming provisions, let me back up. The proposed nonconforming provisions uh that we've drafted, again, they're not, have been approved yet. They allow businesses to um maintain their property, uh, to continue their property, uh, to make um uh improvements to their property that uh don't ex, expand, expand. So when you need the conditional use permit is when you want to expand beyond the envelope. Either the use is going to be intensified or that the building needs to expand in size. Uh, then that's when the conditional use permit would be, would be required, and then it'll be up to the planning commission. You guys decide whether they can, they would, uh, you would accept that expansion, knowing that they'd probably be there a lot longer. Uh, the city would then maybe look at removing uh maybe the next housing element, removing u- units that were counted if that was a housing unit, uh, housing element site. Uh, but the planning commission body would decide whether they would be allowed to expand. Um, but in terms of improvements, maintaining, maintenance, uh, those would still be allowed without a conditional use permit.
I have one other question, uh, along with Commissioner Jimenez. So if somebody has a certain type of business that they're conducting, they've been there for X amount of years. And there's a change in ownership, do they have to continue the same type of business? Or would it be open to an alternative business of some type of manufacturing? Or does it have to be within the same scope of the existing business?
Um, let's see, city staff or Christie, I don't know if you wanted to jump in on this particular question?
I can start and you can welcome to chime in, but um, I, I think the spirit of the nonconforming provisions basically is um, it, it's, it's to maintain property values for property owners and it, this, it's, it's to try to bring properties closer into conformance. Um, that, that's why there's provisions to allow for expansions and there's triggers in terms of um, wha- what types of improvements are necessary to bring it into compliance. But with regards to existing uses, existing businesses that are operating, there is provisions that will allow for new businesses to come in um and, and operate uh as, so as long as uh they do so within a three hundred and sixty-five day period. Um, so that's, that, you know, as, as I mentioned, it's still, you know, the details uh, uh, will, are still being worked out. But that, you know, that's generally what is being proposed at this point.
Yeah, just to clarify, those will be coming back at another time, we're still engaging on conversation and that. Excellent. Okay, um, is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand function if by Zoom or approach the podium. Do we have any cards wishing to speak?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Uh, Mike Gallagher, please.
Thank you, sir. If you can please state your name and city of residence for the record and address the planning commission, sir. Also, please note that there is a three-minute time limit, okay? Thank you.
Mike Gallagher, Western Allied Corporation, I live in La Habra Heights and work here. Uh, we're the sixty-three-year-old business commenting, I'm in the third generation of ownership and the fifth is buying in. I heard the in perpetuity comment, I'd love to be able to believe that if that's true, because you know, I, I don't expect any of us to be sitting here sixty years from now, but sixty years from now, that company is likely to still be there. Uh, we're one of the major mechanical contractors in the basin. Our people make good money, both our union field people and our office people. A point that is often something that people don't think about. All but one of the female employees in our company is the primary breadwinner for her family in it. All but one, one is still living with her, her parents, but all the rest are supporting their households. Uh, good, solid construction jobs do that. And we've been doing that for sixty-three years. We're in an R four area now and had a lot of concerns, uh, it was all the commissioners asked good questions. The reason that everybody panicked when they saw this, and I sit on the contractor's board, I know every contractor in town, everybody panicked. Then they saw, well, I'm not R four, well, we are, right? But the reason we panicked is because of the notice comes out with this map and a statement, which now that I understand it better, makes me feel a little better. I'll sit with Kwong and get a little better education on what nonconforming means. But all it says in the notice is that the nonconforming state requirements are being bent by the city to, to make it more palatable for businesses, those are my words, not its, its words. But that's one sentence in a whole, a whole page of gobbledygook. And so when you see that map, you panic, and we did. Um, we'll be sitting, I, I'll be getting a little bit more education. What I will tell you is that we looked at moving a year ago. It was going to cost us fourteen million dollars to get an appropriate property and then all the stuff you got to do, because you got to bring power in for all your equipment and stuff like that. We manufacture ductwork, we manufacture piping systems, and then we install them, that's what we do. And we don't have fourteen million. If we had to do that, we'd be out of business, those two hundred people would be out of jobs. And the unfair aspect of this socially is that unfortunately, the women in particular would have a real difficult time replacing those jobs with something equivalent. Their households would take a beating. Now, several others would as well, but they almost across the board would. And I have lost a lot of sleep in the last week trying to figure out how I was going to explain this thing to them. I, I feel a little better, haven't heard what I've heard, I hope I feel better after I meet with you. Um, but that's my three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Roy Walker, Walter?
Oh, I can stand up here, yeah, as long as it ain't too long, I'm going to make it short, it's only three minutes. A- anyway, I got here kind of by luck. About two weeks ago, I've got a piece of mail from you guys. It said, uh, the wrong name on it, but it had my address. It said, uh, probably drunk mail, but I'll open it up, see who it really belongs to, call them and say, hey, I got your mail over here. So I opened up the letter, it's a rezoning thing, I looked down there, there's my, my property on it. I went, what the hell's this? So I started looking at the color codes and it ended up that they were downgrading the property. It was in an M two zone, they were making it M one. So I go, what's going on here? So I called, I actually spoke to Mr. Wong here and uh said, what's, what's going on here? You took my whole block on Greenstone and uh basically devaluated. And why? And he said, well, you're too close to residential property. I said, wait a minute, hold it. The only residential property close to me is on the other side of Shoemaker. That's when my blood started to boil a little bit, and an incorporated part of Whittier that the only, those people, the only thing they ever did for me is their kids would come over and graffiti once in a while on my building. That's it. It's probably the lowest place I would say in Whittier. Okay, it's unincorporated, so anyway. I said, well, how close am I to there? He said, you're six hundred and fifty-eight feet by on Google. I said, well, six hundred and sixty foot would be an eighth of a mile. Now, an eighth of a mile away, I know that the noise that I'm putting out or whatever we're doing there, I've been off now, I broke my damn back, but anyway. I said, uh, they ain't even in this city. You know, what are, what are we doing here? And then he said, well, kind of being neighborly or whatever. I said, but this is costing me money. And he goes, I said, the more restrictions there are on a property, the less its value is. It's pretty simple in my little head. So when you take an M one, make an M two, M one, they're putting more restrictions, makes it less desirable to rent, less renters, and it hurts the value, value of the property. So I calls up G M Properties, which when I was in rehab on my back, they re-leased my property because I couldn't do it. My wife couldn't do it, so I called him up, Dr. Tyler says, hey, I want to do, evaluate my property. And he said, well, you can't take M one and M two because M one might have a Taj Mahal building and the M two might have an older building, so you can't take that as a price. What I can do is wipe out all the improvements on the property, just make a square foot of land to square foot of land. I said, sounds fair to me. So we ran the numbers, the last eighteen months in uh about a four-mile area around my property. I lost about eight and a half percent on the value of my property. And I go, wow. And I go, wow, I paid not four hundred dollars, I paid cash word in nineteen ninety-one. And I said, and you're talking about a lot of money to a guy like me. Not, I'll be dead, but I'm leaving it to my kids. That's the only reason I'm here. Uh, so I called up Mr. Wong and told him my concern. I said, did you guys ever do any analyzing on what you're doing here? And he goes, well, we didn't really have the money or the people to do that. And uh, I said, okay. So so in other words, you have no idea what you're doing to these people. You're all in a closed-door meeting and you're deciding what to do with them. Okay, for a guy that owned a property since nineteen ninety-one, I have never been invited or had a letter sent to me or anything about a meeting, what you're doing. Nothing, zero. So I got on the Zillow and looked up, or not Zillow, uh, Craig's, I don't know. Anyway, I punched up problems in Santa Fe Springs zoning. And they came up with meetings in December, meetings in January, meetings how many years back? I said, well, you you'd think they'd send me a certified letter saying this is what we're doing to you.
Sir, I understand. Um, and I apologize for interrupting you, but we did go over and we gave you an extra time. I would encourage also to for Mr. Nguyen to follow up.
Well, I've talked to him. He he, I think he's smart enough to understand what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
But he's not going to agree with it. I mean, he's trying to sugarcoat it, that everything is great, and I can, my tenant could stay there. Another thing, there's hash marks on my property. I said, what is that all about? He goes, oh, you're in redevelopment. I go.
Well, the good thing right now, at least on this nonconforming aspect, we're still going back and forth with that. So we, this is one thing that has to be addressed fully with our um business community and with the city. So we will take what you're saying to heart because this is something that needs to be looked at appropriately.
I said, well, I wouldn't want to buy a property that was in redevelopment. When I bought this property, I had trouble in South El Monte. They said I was doing too heavy a work there. I came to your city here, I said, this is what I'm doing here. This is the equipment I'm running. And they said, you can do anything you want there.
Well, and I can.
In ninety-one, and same same.
City backs our business community. So this is one thing that, yes, it's conformed that we must apply by for our general plan. But one thing that we do do and is conforms with our planning department is we make sure that we work with you. You'll hear us and we'll go from there, so.
And I asked him if my taxes was going to go down. And he said, well, we don't do any of that. And I said, well, could you call them and tell them you just devaluated my property? A couple hundred thousand dollars, and maybe I'll make it up in taxes.
Thank you, sir. Teresa, do we have another? Oh, go ahead, Quan. No, okay. Do we have another speaker?
Madam Chair, Paul Angelos.
Thank you, and sir, if you can please state your name and city of residence for the record and address for the planning commission. Again, three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Paul Angelus, uh, Angelus Shoe Polish. My business is on one, two, zero, flo- one, two. I'm on Florence. And I live in La Palma, and I I'm glad to hear that the uh uh nonconforming section is still under review. Uh, a couple of the uh commissioners brought up uh some points and and for laymen out here in the in the audience, eh they get addressed, but they get addressed, and we don't really understand it fully. Uh, there was a good question about if uh I wanted to sell my building to another manufacturer. Uh, and then it came back, well, that would be fine, but what if I decided to rent or sell my building to a man that wanted to do warehousing or fulfillment? That could, from what I understood, that would be a totally different situation that may not be approved. So the scope of my ability to sell or rent the building, which we have actually no plans to do, uh, would greatly narrow. Uh, the conditional use permit um bothers me greatly because eh the the old expression, the devil's in the details, and eh it it concerns me that it it's an open-ended thing that could really cause us a lot of problems. I I really do want to work with the city. I realize you're under restrictions and you have to get s- certain things done. But um the nonconforming part really does concern me, and I'm sure it concerns Mike. And uh, uh, we want to be good citizens in the city and and make this work. But there there are a couple of things that we will say object to or or truthfully don't fully understand. And I'm I'm happy to come meet with anybody that wants us outside of this i- if you can explain it a little better. Because honestly, uh, when it's explained, the gentleman said, well, he I could sell to another manufacturer, that's fine, but what if it's someone else, someone that wants, you you, I think you understand what I'm saying, so I don't want to be a labor of this. So uh, these are the things I I would like us to address, and I appreciate your time.
Um, Madam Chair, we have Dan Haskins of Franklin, from the Franklin family.
Thank you, sir. And again, your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening, uh, Chair Carver, all members of the commission, senior council, city staff. My name's Dan Haskins, um, with Land Engineering Consultants. I'm a principal there. I represent the fam- Franklin Family Partnership and have done so for fourteen years um on their properties as their engineer, surveyor, architect, many different roles. First, I want to thank staff. I was allowed to be a part of the zoning advisory group. I really appreciated that time. Staff worked great. They heard our comments and concerns. And um, we really appreciate the input that we're going to be able to make as part of the nonconforming uh uh portion of this update. Uh, our property is at the northwest southeast corner of Norwalk Boulevard in Washington. So it's at the location where a proposed transit district station will be placed. So it's critical that we get those, the verbiage right in our and and the 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 nonconforming use can be flexible to the uses. Um, ultimately, you know, we have commercial uses there. They may occupy that, obviously, through my lifetime and maybe maybe the next generation, but ultimately with the housing stuff that the city's pressuring on many cities, we understand that that flexibility may go away at some time. So in looking at the MUTOD district standards um tonight as they are, um, looking forward to the future, um, we had a concern that we had brought an address to the city a zoning advisory group months ago, and then I brought it again to their attention this morning in an email uh regarding the landscape requirements. And I think it's just something that's not real clear to me. Um, so I just wanted to ask, and I I maybe I'll still be getting an email back, um, but um they addressed it in the presentation um with, we've got a very irregular-shaped parcel that's very acute in angle. So we've got a lot of street frontage. In other words, if you have an example, if you've got a property that's perhaps surrounded by four streets, and then your landscape requirements are based on the length of the street, then that can have a much larger impact versus a property that may only front on one street, but even be a larger parcel. So what I was trying to say is that, you know, just the way the code is written, it perhaps could be punitive to certain shaped parcels where you have a rectangle or square and a single frontage road. It would be, you know, they wouldn't have much landscape requirements and square footage, whereas we have two major boulevards and the way it's shaped, we have long streets. So just by that nature, the computation of landscape areas goes exceedingly high. And in this case, about thirty-five percent more. So it's, you know, and then we, because of the acute angle, we're pinched, so we have left less area to develop buildings, but now we have thirty-five percent more landscape if we were then just a rectangle piece. So it really exacerbates it. So I wanted to make that point. Apologize, I'm out of time. Anyway, that was the point. I think they addressed it. We'll we'll be working together with the nonconforming use. And I just want to also make note that the city staff has been really good. And so I like where everything's going and I appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. There anything else? Planning Secretary? Any other speakers?
No, Madam Chair, I don't see any raised hands.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, uh, Assistant Director, uh, Quan Nguyen, were there any other additional comments you'd like to address or received or anything not reflected in the staff report?
Yes, um, so eh eh just to kind of provide a recap, uh, and I guess comment to to all the comments received, uh, we appreciate the comments that were provided tonight. And they're all very good comments, and we will certainly consider each and every one of them as we proceed with the nonconforming provisions project. Um, look forward to working with any of you who would like to participate in the nonconforming provisions um update. And um, uh, in terms of additional comments that have not been disclosed in the staff report or tonight's presentation, there has been none, um, aside from the ones mentioned.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, is there a motion to adopt resolution number two, four, two, dash, two, zero, two, three, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter? And recommend that the city council approve and adopt two ordinance, ordinance number eleven thirty-one to effectuate the proposed targeted amendments to the text of the city zoning ordinance and ordinance eleven thirty-two to effectuate the proposed changes uh to the existing zoning map.
Madam Chair, before we take um a motion, can we close the public hearing, please?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, didn't say that here. So we'll close the public hearing, I apologize, at seven oh eight. Going back to the motion, can I, I'll move. Yep. Commissioner Jimenez, may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mora, planning secretary, roll call vote.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Chair Carver?
Aye.
Passes four zero.
Thank you. So ordered, and planning commission attorney, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant a writ notice of the commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation uh update on the homeless encampment at the Sonic site. I would like to call upon a director of planning, Wayne Morale, to provide an update on the homeless encampment uh at the future site of Sonic and Dave's Hot Chicken site.
Thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair. So, so real quickly. So at the last planning commission meeting, while Associate Planner Vince Velasco was giving his mid-year presentation, there was a Commissioner Yala inquired about the homeless encampment at the Dave's Hot Chicken site mall. Dave Hot Chicken is one of the tenants, but the main tenant is Sonic. Since that time, and we were asked to bring this back to you, since that last meeting, a crew went out over the weekend and gave the people there notice to vacate. When they previously attempted to do so, essentially, the homeless people there said, we're not moving. The only way we'll move is if you bring the the police to evict us from the property. So they contacted our police service center, who does this on a day-to-day basis. So once the owner, and again, we're no longer the owner of the property, once the owner arranged to have someone go out, they went out. So this is what you probably saw when this came to your attention. There was a gentleman there literally building his little home. And there the one to the far right that was using pallets to make his home. And this is it as it exists as of yesterday. So the site has been cleaned up. We are still going to have them go out and focus on the exterior because we believe that still needs to be to be walked on. So it's now clean. And I will have Teresa Day, oh, no, Teresa is not the plan check on that. But we should see grading real soon because the grading contractor came in today to pull the grading permit, but there are some fees that needs to be paid. But we should see grading on the site fairly soon. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven, public comment. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function. If you wish to make a co- public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The planning secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members um of the public present that wish to speak today?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I will now close public comment and move to the next item, number eight, staff announcements. Are there any announcements from staff, please?
Um, I guess just to kind of um mention the next steps for the targeted zoning ordinance update eh with your recommendation tonight. Uh, the uh ordinance will be presented to the city council at a public hearing on August fifteenth for the first reading and thereafter, the first meeting in September for the second reading.
Thank you. Item nine, commissioner announcements, AB one, two, three, four, commission conference reporting. If there's any commissioners, do we have anything to announce? Let's start with Commissioner Flores.
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jimenez?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Mora?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, and myself. Uh, August thirteenth, Santa Fe Springs Women's Club is having our annual nineteenth annual fashion show. Of course, all monies received go to um hot local high school students for uh scholarship programs, so that's our big event. That's it. Uh, item number ten, a German, I would like to adjourn this meeting at seven fourteen.